I'd like to call Harahan Council Meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for the City of Harahan, March 15th. Madam Clerk, the pledge, please.
(inaudible) A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Protem Bodier.
Present.
Councilman Benton.
Present.
Councilman Hewitt.
Present.
Councilman Johnston.
Present.
Councilman Wheeler.
Present.
Mayor Misselli is absent. Police Chief Walker.
Here.
Fire Chief St. Seer.
Present.
City Attorney Bures.
Present.
City CPA Linda Lulu is absent. And Municipal Clerk Nicole Lee is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just a few comments. First of all, I don't know if you guys know, but Tom Benson passed away today. And so just that we can give a moment for him. He was such a great New Orleans icon, and he brought so much to this city. And though he has done probably not much in the City of Harahan, but he's done much by bringing the Saints in the Super Bowl, you know, picking the economy up. And we've all felt the ripple effect and repercussions of all of the great deeds that he's done. So we could just take one second. And Tom Benson, who dat?
Who dat? All right.
Just want to make a couple of comments real quick, and then I'll move on to special presentations. I've been working with, I've been working with, but I've actually been, me and Councilman Wheeler, have been discussing a couple of projects in the city. And this is one that really, I think, should have been addressed quite a bit a time ago. And this is, Cherie Johnson has been requesting for two years that this drain, and I'll pass this picture around, be fixed on the corner of Elodie, right behind Whitney Bank. And my fear is that, not even as a candidate for mayor or a councilman, this is sad. This is a terrible day for us. Because I guarantee you, if some old lady would, or elderly person, would have gotten their tire in this, the first thing they would have done is give the car the gas. That car would have come out of there out of control, and we don't know who would have got hurt. And for this to last in the city for two years, I can guarantee you this, God bless it be that I become this mayor, this wouldn't stay here for two minutes. Second, and this one's kind of real strange that I've been trying to work on as well, because I welcome anybody's advice and complaints or whatever you've got. On the corner of, on the picture, on the corner of Rin, not Rin, on Aaron Court and Jefferson Highway, there's actually a tree holding up, the power lines are actually holding up a tree branch. It's the craziest thing you've ever seen, and I just, for the life of me, can't figure out why nothing has been done about it. Oh, here, just right here. Oh, this one's awesome. I can't figure this out, for the life of me. This is so unbelievably dangerous. I have no idea why this is addressed. Again, this gentleman has been asking for over two years to get this tree cut down off the power lines. Now, I know we had this ABC tree removal here, which I'm not a big fan of, and I got a huge amount of complaints, and they coughed up everybody's trees, that was just unmerciful. But I wish they would have cut this one down, and I can't figure out, for the life of me, why they didn't.
Is it a city tree, or is it?
It's actually on the canal, it's right on the canal of Aaron Court. I don't care whose tree it is, though. I would have called, I called J&amp;W Tree Service to cut this tree down, and they said they couldn't do it without the mass permission. And they have not granted them permission to do it. And for me, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but I don't care whose tree it is. If somebody's going to get hurt, I go out there and then cut it down myself. I'm actually running a meeting tonight, and I guess out of sheer disrespect to me, I was never informed that the mayor was out of town, but I take that back, because Attorney Gilbert said, "We were informed." I'm sorry, I can't read my city email, they've changed it so much that I can't download it or even read it at all anymore. That's the only comments I really have, and I'm really out, I'm in a city now, I'm working really hard. If you've got any complaints, this is our job. Call us, call any one of us. And I guarantee you, every one of us, no matter what the tempo is up here, will be out there to help you. Now we can move on to special presentations. First, Ms. Thalene Schwartz, Community Liaison.
Got a few announcements here, and I'll try to be brief. Faith Lutheran, on April 21st, over on Colonial, is going to be having their annual fundraiser. This year, it's a Night of Disney. It'll be from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. I went to this last year, and it was really nice. They had a lot of band, a lot of good food, of course, some adult beverages, silent auction with some really nice stuff that was up for good prices. And if anyone's interested, I wasn't able to get the amount, I can't remember, last year, may have been $20, $25 to get a ticket in, but it was well worth it. And Brenda Doyle is your point of contact at 737-7765, 737-7765. And so try to make some time for that. Wanted to remind everybody again about property taxes. April the 1st will be the next increase, and I don't know what the amount is, it's going to be a bunch.
Yeah.
There's already been February and March collection fees added to that, the city doesn't get it. April 1st, there's going to be additional charges, so please, if you're not sure, or whatever, give the city a call, we'll be happy to look it up for you, so you can make sure you're up to date on your 2017 property taxes. We've got a fundraiser coming up that's going to benefit one of our Harahan residents, Michael Michael and his family went on a skiing trip. That was the good news. They went up to Chicago and had a nice little family vacation. The bad news is, while Michael was up there, he cuts grass for a living, is one of his jobs, he was sledding and had the unfortunate accident happen of breaking his back. So obviously, he's incurring a lot of medical costs, and he is out of work besides. The Mill Bar on River Oaks Road, Sunday, May 20th, from noon to 4:00 PM, will be having a fundraiser for Michael. And so I would ask everybody to please try to make some time for that. $10 donation includes food. I mean, that's about as cheap as you're going to get, $5 for kids 12 and under.
Say the name again.
It's Michael Leslie, L-E-S-S-L-I-E. And I think he lives on Oak, if I'm not mistaken, but.
And at the time?
It's going to be from noon to 4:00, Tim.
And say the name of the place again.
The Mill Bar, 5808 River Oaks Road South. I've heard of the place, I've never been there, they say it's a pretty nice place, so if, again, that's going to be on Sunday, May 20th. So for $10, I mean, again, to help a local family out, that's the least we can do. There'll be a silent auction and raffle. If anybody wants to donate anything or whatever, just give me a call, and I'll be happy to put you in touch with the right person. His sister is actually helping to organize this, and asked if I would help get the word out. On March 29th, which is a Thursday, from 8:30 in the morning to 1:00 in the afternoon, out there by the Puncher Train Center, near the Treasure Chest Casino, they're having a senior citizen exposition, of which most of us are in that category now. I don't know if that's good or bad, but they are. Admission is free and open to the public, and they will be providing lunch. They're going to have a bunch of health booths set up, they're going to do some free health screenings. So that's free, and weather's nice, I'd suggest getting out and going to partake. Lady by the name of Robin, at phone number 207-4141, you can call her if you would like to be a sponsor or need additional information. And I think that's it. I'm sure I'm probably going to forget something, but whatever. On that tree issue, Tim, give me a call, or let's get together on it, because I've looked into that quite a bit. And if I'm remembering right, I think the roots of the tree is located on private property, and it was not nice, it was not nice when JW, because I think I called JW and asked them to give us a price, and he was like, "Go away, go away." I called Antergy, because I'm not sure if it's an electrical line, or a cable line, or what kind of line. And Energy was supposed to go out and take a look at it, and Cox said, "No, it's not ours," and it's like this. And I'm.
I've been in touch with the Public Service Commissioner.
Okay.
And he's going to come out and take a peek at it.
Good, and figure out who's responsible. And the man did not want any of the branches cut off the tree, because the tree's on his property, and it was.
Yeah, this is a health saving.
I, yeah, so anyhow, if you need anything else, let me know.
Thank you.
Have a good night, folks.
Thank you.
All right, Chief. Current state of the Harahan Police Department?
Mayor, Council, viewing public, Tim Walker, Harahan Police Chief. I have some questions for the mayor and Ms. Lulu and our finance director, but apparently neither one of them are here tonight. For your information, we still aren't receiving financials in a timely, it was Sunday, two weeks ago, March the 4th, the first time I got a financial statement, went through November of 2017. It doesn't tell me, and I'm sure it doesn't tell the council, where we had financially. Nothing for 2018. I mean, this is ridiculous. We're paying over $200,000 for a finance director, and we can't get finances, information on a timely basis. You know, y'all passed an ordinance, ordinance 1800, which states that the mayor shall give the council, within 20 days after the preceding month, their financials. And we still haven't get it. Also, dealing with your ordinance 1839, for the police department to get access to city Harahan financials, that's still not in place. So I don't know when that's going to come to be. And I understand, we're still being charged for Mr. Bures, Ms. Lulu, and the city auditor, without us getting the invoices. That hasn't changed either. It just, it just doesn't go anywhere else. Another thing that I'll bring up next month, if the mayor's here, we mentioned to you before that we had four employees in '16 and '17 that were no longer employed by the police department, but they still took out health insurance premiums of over $21,000. We just found out recently, and Ms. Lulu charged us $1,556 to put the money back, I guess, into our account. $1,500. I don't know where it's going to end.
Journal entry.
What?
She said it's an expensive journal entry.
I guess it is. Also, on March the 3rd, we had an incident during about an early morning hours, apparently some neighbors around Mayo and Jefferson Highway called several times about a suspicious-looking vehicle. It turned out that we stopped the vehicle for a traffic violation, and the passenger was wanted by the sheriff's office for burglary, and also had an extensive record for burglary. So you're our eyes and ears. When you see something suspicious, feels out of place, call us, let us go check it out. This was a great, great example of how the participation between you, the public, and the police department works together. And it's with your help, we can keep this place safe. Also, don't forget to lock your cars, just press the button. And you notice the signs on Jefferson Highway in front of the building, and also in the back on Hickory? I've been asking to get permission to do it, I've finally received it from the state, the San, St. Harahan Police Department. We have a lot of motorists passing through here, don't realize the police station's here. And I want to thank Councilman Paul Johnson for paying for the signs and having them erected. It's about two years in coming, but it's here. And there's a rumor floating around again that I'm running for mayor, that is totally incorrect. I'm running for police chief later on this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Okay, I'd like to open up, address the council. I am not going to put a timer on anybody tonight, because I think that is ludicrous. But I would like you to respect everybody's time, and get up here, say what you've got to say, and let's see if we can move the meeting forward.
Eric Chatelain, 700 Colonial Club Drive. I know they don't a lot of construction, sewer repairs, different things. I just don't understand why they're going to deliver construction materials out there to make repairs on the streets, and just leave it on the shoulder, park a 15,000-pound piece of equipment right on the shoulder of the road when the road's destroyed. Cars coming off a six-street cannot look to the right and see cars coming on Colonial Club. I've had plenty of cars pull out in front of me. It's a lot of rocks right there, so like, the cars, they pull out and they slam their brakes real quick. It's really not safe. I understand they need to do the construction, and it's going to take a little bit of time. It's taken a longer time than I'm sure we expected, but the equipment's got to be moved. I mean, they could take the piece of equipment and park it in my front yard, I could care less. It's going to be safer than what we have there. A kid coming down the road, inexperienced driver, I mean, you're hitting them rocks, and you know, if they barely run off the shoulder, they're going to hit this 15,000-pound piece of equipment. I mean, I'm so close to hitting it when I drive past, because the other cars are coming, it's kind of rough. And it's my fault, because I wanted to call numerous times, and I've just been too busy every time, but I just was here tonight, I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention, to see if someone can get that piece of equipment moved.
How long's it been there, Eric?
Over two weeks. And we had the same problem on Colonial a while back, and I know the chief, I called him, and we got the piece of equipment moved, it's just, it's unsafe where it's at. You know, if there's anything they could do to get the guys to come move it, like I said, I mean, they better if they move it 100 yards towards the playground, just to get it away from the corner, and the cars just can't see. You know, like I said, they could park in my driveway, I could care less. Where it's at, it's just unsafe spot. Another thing is, all of the rocks on the road, they're going in the storm drain. I mean, if you go drive by, I guarantee you pull that storm drain, you'll pick 10 gallons of rocks out that storm drain. It's just, it's taking longer than it should. I believe they're trying to do it right. You go down Wilson, it looks horrible. I mean, I'm reading this here, y'all got resolutions for driveway, street repairs. Whoever's doing these repairs is doing a horrible job. I mean, somebody from the city needs to go out there and inspect this. You know, the regulatory department here, whoever's doing their quality of life, they're not doing their job. I mean, I know numerous people called here complaining about storm drains from neighbors running into their yard, and nothing's being done. Nothing's being done. Basically, we can go do what we want, when we want, nothing's being done to stop us. Some people are getting away with things, moving in houses without sidewalks, without grass. Other people want to move in their house, they didn't know they needed a sidewalk, they can't do that until they get a sidewalk and grass. You know, why'd A, get away with it, and B, didn't? You know, we need to see, everything's going to be treated the same, good or bad, one way or another. So if y'all could relay that to the mayor, I mean, I didn't know she wasn't going to be here, but that's what needs to be done. Thank you.
Mr. Chatelain, real quick, you said, "I know it's my fault, because I didn't report it." But as the chief said prior, it's not your fault. What it is, is that we need to be working together in this city, we need to be the eyes and ears for one another. You know, I've said it over and over, and I tell you, today I heard a saying, and it really stuck out to me, it said, "Where there is unity, there is strength." And when we become a unified city, hopefully sometime soon, we all work together, and we'll address these complaints, you know, one at a time, and we will get them solved.
I agree.
Thank you.
I agree. And the chief knows, and City Hall, I mean, I call here all the time with complaints. And I say it's complaints, it's things that need to be looked at. I mean, you don't drive down Colonial Club every day. I do. So when I see something wrong in Colonial, I'm going to call.
Yes, sir.
I don't drive down Oakland. You do, if something's wrong in Oakland. It's the people, like you say, the eyes and ears of the citizens of Harahan.
Absolutely.
That's what we need.
Thank you.
When they call here, it's not a complaint, it's just to make them aware.
Absolutely.
But we get tired of calling, and nothing getting done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Keith Moody, 6901 Jefferson Highway, representing my brother's bar, your new adult daycare center is open. The grand opening is going to be Saturday, we're having an all-day green St. Patrick's Day party, green adult beverages will be served, children and smaller kids can come enjoy the festivities, crawfish boil, but you can't come in the adult care center until you're an adult, so. We're kind of combining at this time with, unfortunately, a fundraiser. Many of you know Dawn Orr, who is the owner, operator of Saving Time, and also the landlord of Sister's Table, and my brother's bar. She just got back from MD Anderson, and been diagnosed with stage IV pancreatic cancer. So I ask that you say a little prayer, pray to whoever you pray to at night, and ask for a blessing. I whipped up some T-shirts and hats, green in flavor, and we're calling it the First Annual St. Patrick's Day Harahan Festival, although Carlo advised us, there used to be something like that here, so we're bringing sexy back. Carlo's going to be our grand marshal. And he's also the official entertainment coordinator and security of my brother's bar. Plus, he owns everything, anyway, so. I'm not running for mayor, chief of police, or sheriff, but I encourage everybody to get out and vote, whoever you choose. It is a right that we all, many men and women have died to protect your right to vote, so whoever you choose, please go out and vote, and early vote, just vote. So I'd love for y'all to come out, rain or shine, Saturday, all day, there's going to be live entertainment. Buy a green hat and T-shirt, we're going to surprise, yeah, it'll still be a surprise, I guess. This won't be televised, obviously, so please share it to your social medias. And that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Y'all are welcome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Evelyn Ream. This is one of the shortest speeches that I'm going to give, and you're not going to put a time frame on me. That is remarkable. Man, I kind of wrote it on the back, and then we.
Adlib.
Thank you. Women's Materials versus the City of Harahan court date was scheduled for tomorrow, March 16, 2018, at 9:30 AM, in 24th Judicial Court in Gretna, Division K, Judge Ellen Kovec. It was canceled today, and the new court date is April 24, 2018, at 9:30 AM. Attorney Gear Bures, we would like to thank you for all the work that you are doing with this court case for the city and the residents. We know its extent, so we'd like to thank you very much for that. Women's Materials was fully aware that compost mulch tree dumping and manufacturing on the Bachelor in Harahan is against the Harahan In U Bachelor District ordinance. Compost mulch and tree dumping are not permitted uses on the Bachelor in Harahan, and line 6 states, no manufacturing shall be done on site. The Harahan Bachelor law was put in place long ago to protect the large Harahan residential community. Please pray for the City of Harahan to win the court case, avoid materials illegal compost on the Bachelor in Harahan greatly affecting the Harahan residents' quality of life. Bible verse in Romans 8:31 says, "If God be for us, who can be against us?" And Bible verse in Matthew 19:26 says, "With God, all things are possible." We would not have been able to do this for two and a half years if we didn't believe in God, and we didn't believe that we had a Savior called Jesus Christ, who tells us to cast all our cares on Him, and if we lack wisdom, to ask Him for it. And that is the only way that we have survived this, is through prayer, and believing, and trusting, that God does not promote lawlessness, and God stands for righteousness. So we know that the City of Harahan will win this case, and the right things will be done for these residents on the Bachelor. So thank you for all of your help, and I hope that you'll all be able to come to the new court date of April 24th. Please mark your calendars, because it's important that every one of you be there for us. Okay? Thank you very much.
Mr. Bures, quick question. Is there a limitation on motions for continuance? It seems like every time there's a date, there's a continuance, and then there's a continuance of that, and then there's another one. Is there ever enough where the judge finally says, "No more continuance, we're going to hear this"?
The exception for prescription was never set for hearing until I said it. But we found out today, both Mr. Bellard and I, that Judge Kovac doesn't take live testimony on Fridays, anyway. And it, you know, we want to put on live testimony, and so Wood said, "We've got two witnesses, one of whom is your former mayor," but he had a medical appointment, so he couldn't make today, so we picked another day. And in the meantime, we will be deposing Mr. Pierce Wood and Mr. Benny Moscow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Ream, 3 Rent Pass. Unfortunately, some of our citizens can't make that, the 24th, can we get it postponed again?
You don't want that.
No, I don't want that, I want to get it done. I don't know if I could do it or not, but I want to announce that I want to run for city council, and part of my thing is that I talk to a lot of these meetings, so I don't know. But anyway, I grew up in Harahan, left in 1976, but I returned in October 24th, October 2014, and I'm back. So, and I want to participate in Harahan's political, you know, I don't like to say political, but I think that working together, like Tim was saying, and working with everybody, that we need to get together and work together, and make sure that we all contribute our part, you know? And I think that I have 37 years of experience with Antergy, LPNL and Antergy, which changed its name, that I can, would be a great benefit to the community of Harahan. I've been in different areas in Antergy, and I worked, have a lot of different expertises. I worked in a, I had a smaller sewage plant, so I know a little bit about the sewage plant, I know a little bit about everything, and I didn't get electrocuted the whole time I was over there. But I have, I worked for a plant, and there's a lot of similarity between a power plant and the city government. And the thing is, is that I was a quality facilitator at one time there, and what we did, we got together with all our projects, we listed all the projects out, and the cost of those projects, projected cost. And then we had the money, we knew how much money we had, but Antergy is a little bit different than city government, in that another plant might have a problem, and all of a sudden, you lose a big chunk of your money. So all your little projects, you have them all laid out in the order of their importance, so you have to knock some of the ones off the bottom. So this year, such and such might not get done. So that's the way we need to run our city. And if we can't make it, we got the budget, and that's all you got, you don't have any more than that, and we know what we can do, and we have to knock some things off, we just have to cut back, but I think that's the way to do it. But everybody needs to work together, and the city council meetings need to be more open, back and forth, you know? I don't understand the way it is here, because we go to the Jefferson Parish meeting, it's different. And I'm telling you what, the Southeast Louisiana Flood Protection Authority is totally different. Those guys talk, it's like, we there spectating their meeting, and they have a meeting that, in the power plant, that's how we did, we just had meetings, we didn't have any people coming in, it's just all plant people. So I think that I can benefit Harahan in the experiences that I do have. And being retired, I have a lot more time to spend in meeting with residents, and discussing, and addressing their concerns. I'm friendly, and I enjoy spending time with people, and our door's always open, you know, my assistant right there, she'll be present all the time.
You mean the boss?
But our doors are always open. We have 3 Rent Pass and Riverside Drive, so if anybody wants to stop by and talk to us about anything, stop by and talk to us. And I have acquired much knowledge also from representing the residents of Harahan concerning the Harahan Bachelor problems. And my wife and I have met with lots of local, state, and federal agencies, and will continue to do so on behalf of the City of Harahan. I want to be a positive influence on the city and the community of Harahan. So I appreciate y'all letting me talk, and I hope that wasn't like a stump, you know, the stump, but I want to let everybody know that I'm for y'all, and I want everything to work out, and, you know, everybody needs to work in the same direction, so thank y'all, God bless, and.
And good luck to you.
Good luck to you.
Good luck to you.
Much.
Two other matters, one I forgot to mention a minute ago. We have received some financial information. And I know I mentioned to this council in the past, y'all really need to strongly consider hiring a forensic auditor to go through our books. There are some things that we're starting to uncover that just doesn't make any sense, you know, financially. So I don't know if y'all need a motion, if you need an ordinance, a resolution to hire one. I don't think it'll be cheap, but I think it'll be quite worthy, to find out where our money's going. On another note, March 24th is a sheriff's election, very, very important election. As I've stated before, I'm supporting Sheriff Lapinto. If you think I'm doing a satisfied job with the police department Harahan, Harahan residents, Harahan business owners, please join me in supporting Sheriff Lapinto. He has done a lot to help me behind the scenes, to make this a better department, to make this a better community. Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to close, address the council. I'd like to make just a couple of quick comments.
I'd like to make just a couple of quick comments. I went and, I truly believe in building bridges in life. I try never to burn a bridge down. I truly believe that it's a great way of life, and I know you can get more done by building bridges and not burning them down. I went and met with Pierce Woods, and we were talking about the progress. It actually looks pretty nice back there. The roads are coming along. I know it's not as fast as the Reams would like, and probably not as fast as he probably could do it, but it's coming along, it looks real nice, it's a real nice business back there. And, and of course, we talked about the mulching. And his question to me was, was really a good one. He said, "Who protects me as a business owner?" And I said, I told him simply this, "Pierce, close that haul road in those burns, grass that haul road you have now, finish that road back there, and move that mulch out of Harahan to where it's legal, and I guarantee you, I will stand right here, and I will be your champion for business." But until that time happens, I have to be a champion for my neighbors and my fellow residents that are here. And, you know, I know it's weird, and maybe I didn't get through to him, but I think I kinda did. And so we'll see where he goes, and hopefully between this continuance here and there, that maybe he wizes up and moves that friggin' mulch. Because I'm ready for that stuff to be moved myself.
All right, approval of the minutes. Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on February 22nd.
Do we have a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, well, five yeas, zero nays.
Oh, yeah, four yeas. No, he can vote.
Yeah, five yeas, zero nays.
All right, approval of the minutes of the council meeting on February 22nd.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Three yeas?
No, two yeas.
Motion passes.
Communications. The Board of Adjustments and Appeals did not meet in February, and the Planning and Zoning Board did not meet in March. And resolutions. The following resolution was offered unanimously by the Council of the City of Harahan. Proposed Resolution Number 2018-2. A resolution accepting funds from Jefferson Parish in the amount of $70,000 for the benefit of the Recreation Department to provide funding for upgrades and improvements to Wilcox Field and Harahan Playground. Whereas the City of Harahan is a city within the Parish of Jefferson, and whereas the Parish of Jefferson and the City of Harahan have entered into an intergovernmental agreement to provide funding for upgrades and improvements to Wilcox Field and Harahan Playground. And whereas the Parish of Jefferson is providing funding to the City of Harahan Recreation Department for bulldozing the infield, adding subsurface drainage from the edges of the infield to the outfield, installation of a new backstop, swapping the dugout and bleacher locations, and the addition of a sprinkler system. And whereas the City of Harahan appreciates the assistance of Jefferson Parish Councilman Paul Johnston, District 2. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of, by the Harahan City Council, acting as governing authority of said city, that the City of Harahan agrees to provide funding to the Recreation Department in the amount of $70,000 for upgrades and improvements to Wilcox Field and Harahan Playground. The foregoing resolution having been submitted to a vote, the vote thereon was as follows.
Do we have a motion open for public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Aye.
Eric Chatelain, 700 Colonial Club Drive, also president of the Harahan Athletic Association. I wanna say I've spoke to numerous people at Jefferson Parish. I wanna say the dollar amount is a little higher than this. I believe it's $75,000. We could just double check on that. And the second thing is, we just need to make sure that all of these funds that are allocated for this is going to the playground.
It says 70 in the parish resolution.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we just need to double check. I mean, I've been in numerous conversations with people, and it was 75. But if we're getting 75, I want 75. All right, thank you.
Eric, wasn't it supposed to be that the funding was supposed to directly go to the Harahan Athletic Association? This says it's going to the Recreation Department. So is the money going into the budget, and then it's paid out?
We need to verify that with Jefferson Parish. I believe the money was going to the Recreation Athletic Association?
It says it goes, it's.
It says on the resolution that it's Jefferson Parish to cooperate with the City of Harahan on behalf of the Recreation Department. Doesn't say anything about the Athletic Association, it says actually with the city, so.
Well, maybe before we should vote on it, I think we should get some clarification on it first.
We just need to verify that. Because what my discussions with parish employees were, we were gonna get the work done. You know, it's gotta be approved by the mayor, city property. We get the work done, submit the invoices, parish pays the invoices.
Directly, right.
Directly, is the way we understood it. Could be wrong. I wasn't in every conversation, but let's just double check. Thank you.
Mr. Beers, how do we go about just putting this to the end of the meeting? Because I'm sure Councilman Johnston's gonna be coming soon. So we put this today? Okay. A motion to defer, to put it on the table to the end of the meeting.
So the concern would be that you all believe that the money was proposed not to be allocated to the Recreation Department call center, and that you want it allocated to the Harahan Athletic Association?
I think the understanding is, is the parish is gonna pay the work directly. The way I'm reading this resolution is like, it looks like the parish is gonna send the money to the city to be budgeted in the Recreation Department and then pay it from there. Where my understanding from who I've spoken with is that the work gets approved by the city. I guess the POs or the invoices get submitted to the parish, the parish pays it directly. So it's not like it even comes to the city.
We don't receive it.
Right, but according to this, it makes it sound like it's going into the Recreation Department budget.
Okay, and clarify the amount.
Right. Thank you.
All right, y'all ready to move on?
Which one? She wants to see the Cliff Notes?
The Cliff Notes.
This proposed Resolution Number 2018-3 is a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the City of Harahan and the John Curtis Christian School. Would y'all like to do this unanimously?
I do not.
No, the following resolution was proposed by Councilmen, who would like to.
The John Curtis?
This is the John Curtis and the City of Harahan Agreement Resolution Cooperative Endeavor. Does anybody wanna sponsor this resolution?
Would you like to make a motion to defer?
Yeah, because I had quite a few questions for the mayor. If I'd have, if I'd have known that she wasn't gonna be here, I could have submitted those questions prior to.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to defer proposed ordinance.
Well, it's gotta be, it's gotta be motion first to come forward.
To who's gonna sponsor it, you mean?
Right.
Right.
What happens if nobody sponsors it?
Sponsored by Councilman Benton.
Is it much different as to the ones previous?
No, you know, I modeled it on the one with the Harahan Athletic Association. I'm just trying to get a sense of what actually goes on out there, because, you know, I've never been to these baseball games.
But John Curtis has always had a cooperative endeavor agreement, right? Every few years.
But I was told that for forty years they've had this, this is the way they use the playground.
And Mr. Beers, one of my biggest concerns is that, you know, we have another school that pays to the city a rental fee. They're only allowed their field usage for four months. This with Curtis is for a year, it's free. With them substituting their own maintenance, but they're given the option to sell concessions. Well, this school's not allowed to sell concessions.
Got, he's got it.
Okay, so.
Completely with you.
Okay, so I will email you the questions. Can you do me a favor, though?
If you could, if you just tell me.
I have no problem. When you receive notice from the mayor that's not gonna be present, can you make sure that the entire council knows, please? I'm not, I mean, you should have known. I'm just asking.
I didn't.
Okay, well, I'll address that with her. But it would have been nice, if I'd have known, I would have had these questions.
Keep talking to Mike from now.
Ready?
Yeah, I really, you know, I don't know if that's my place to do that.
You're right, I apologize, I will address it with her, but if I'd have known, I could have, so, you know, because I know we're always ridiculed of not moving business forward. And if we'd have known, I would have been prepared.
Yeah, but by all means, let me know about all of, you know, what other agreements there are on the playground, because what I tried to do with this was to make sure that, you know, it's a, no pun intended, a level playing field for everybody who wants to use the facilities.
Well, the only thing that I had to resort back to was just, was the Dominican contract, which is only good for a year. So, you know, this mayor preaches consistently that we can't do one without the other, everybody needs to be treated equally. Well, this is clearly not the case here.
You know, I think with, the John Curtis thing has explained to me was, well, they actually use it for four months during baseball season from January to May, though they sometimes come in during the year. And I really wasn't sure what the nature of the use was, so I tried to sort of write this agreement around it, but make it consistent with what the HAA has right now. But all of these agreements, if you're gonna be using city property, I think it's a very good idea that everybody have a consistent, that the city have a consistent policy applied to everybody.
But that's not the case.
I was just about to say, that's one thing I agree with the mayor on, is getting a consistent policy for everyone, so no one feels treated unfairly.
Exactly.
And I just feel that that's what's happening now, so.
So let me ask a question, so I sponsored it, I didn't know all of this about that. It's all new to me. So if I didn't, if no one did sponsor it and it died, could it not be brought up again?
It could be brought back up.
Yes, it could be brought up again.
Can I rescind my sponsor?
I, I, I mean, we can defer it if you like.
Yeah, we're doing a defer, we're gonna defer it anyway.
Go ahead and defer it.
And if you don't sponsor it, I'm gonna.
Okay, all right.
I will get you those questions.
Thanks.
We, we are, yes. It was, it was whenever he calls it.
All right, Mr. Buddy.
A motion.
Make a motion to open, address the council?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Aye.
Tommy Buddy, 7208.
Mr. Buddy.
Is that better?
He doesn't know yet.
7208 Stonely Drive. I have a comment, I just heard that we wanna make the cooperative endeavor agreement with John Curtis the same as the Harahan Athletic Association. I think we're comparing apples and oranges. I think when you look at Dominican, a non-Harahan-based organization, that makes perfectly good sense. The horseshoe facility, which is basically carved out, nobody gets to use it but them, that makes good sense. But the Harahan Athletic Association serves the children of Harahan. Apples and oranges. They deserve special consideration and shouldn't be compared to outside entities using the property. Thank you.
Good point.
I'd like to close, address the council. Anybody else? Nope, I'm gonna close, address the council. And now we'll make the motion to defer?
Motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Wheeler, motion, second.
Defer Fava?
To the next council meeting?
Defer Fava.
Yep, defer Fava.
All right, y'all ready? Ordinance is for approval. The following ordinance, this is a proposed ordinance Number 2017-39, this was deferred last month. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Wheeler and seconded by Councilman Bodie. This is an ordinance, amending ordinance Number 1822, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2017, for the City of Harahan, Louisiana, for the Police Department.
Do we have a motion open for public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Five yeas, zero nays.
Little history of what's happened under this administration. Police Department, like you told my recreation a while ago, has received money from other entities, primarily Jefferson Parish through Councilman Johnson. Say they need a resolution in order to receive it. Resolution has no teeth. At the end of the year, if it's not passed by ordinance to put the money in that department, we lose it. It's happened to me several times in the last two years. So what this ordinance does, and I think Councilman Wheeler has tried to get the information from Ms. Lulu, and she has refused to pass it on, that we created from what information we have at hand in the Police Department, it's almost $300,000 from grant money, from other entities, from the Parish Council, overtime that we reimbursed for, et cetera, that we wanna move it in the 17 to put it in our budget. If not, we lose it. The mayor gets credit for it, even though the bills are paid. Does that make any sense? So if we don't pass this by ordinance, we lose on paper, as far as the audit's concerned, the credit for this money. Even if this money came into the City of Harahan, it paid the bills that it was allocated for, but unless it's moved by ordinance, when they do the audit, the police department won't get credit for it. And like y'all had before, that $70,000 for the playground, we've got one coming up next, too, for $30,000. I suggest y'all do it by ordinance, and that way it's not about somebody taking it and using it someplace else. So I hope y'all vote in favor of this. Any questions?
So this money right here was the money that was given to us in capital, and we have to move from capital to?
Yeah, and some of it was overtime.
Do we have the line items in capital that we're moving it from, or?
Not all, some of it was forfeiture money, some of it was money that we used to pay for capital expenses. Some of it was overtime reimbursement from the government.
Right. Which I understand that, but I see the revenues on here, but does, do we have the lines that we're pulling from to?
Yes, on the second page, the lines. It's $277,837.68 that we know of for 17. It could be more than that, but again, we couldn't get the information from Ms. Lulu.
Right. But that's the, this page you're talking about, right?
Correct.
Which shows the revenues. But does it, do we have where it shows where we're pulling the money from? If that makes sense to you?
No, no, this is just.
This is revenue that came into the city. We gotta make sure it's applied to these accounts.
Right.
By ordinance.
I understand that.
But where was, where was it applied to that's coming from?
Right, where was it applied to that we had to pull from? If it was applied to capital, we have to pull from those capital lines to pull into here.
Yeah, most of it came into capital.
We were just told by the auditor, it had to go, just accept about ordinance, so they're only coming in, right?
You're saying where's the money been sitting?
Where's it been sitting, correct.
You know, Craig, I would love to be able to answer the question to you, where the money's been sitting. We have sent numerous emails to Ms. Linda Lulu. We have not received a reply. Our problem is, if we keep waiting, we're gonna end up in the same situation we were in 2015 and in 2016, where we end up over budget.
Right, because the audit's gonna be coming up soon.
The interest, they close the, the interest income is the interest for our asset forfeiture accounts. The miscellaneous police revenue is the monies that come in for police reports, fingerprinting, background checks, and when, is it Jefferson Parish and different departments like that use the DWI machine? Miscellaneous revenue for $3,500, that also includes our Night Out Against Crime donations and some other monies that had come in, reimbursement that we receive from Jefferson Parish, whenever some of our police officers, we receive a portion of that when they're trained. Restitution was for an accident. I'm sorry, the $3,500 was not, Night Out Against Crime is the $1,150. The police equipment grant, that was a grant that we had. The 26407, that's the non-DOJ account, which was a purchase of a car. Was the asset forfeiture, non-DOJ was the purchase of a car when we did the front part of our, the bulletproofing of the lobby, and was for some lodging whenever police officers went for training. DEA Drug Task Force was the reimbursement we received for our DA agents. The Walmart grant was for our toy run. The overtime that we, we paid out of our budget and it gets reimbursed.
I understand where this comes from, I understand that, I was thinking that.
I can't tell you where, I can't tell you where this money was in the accounts. I don't get that, and I don't have access to that. That is what we stand up here and preach.
Right.
Month after month after month, asking for access to that.
Right, but now that I'm thinking.
So I can't give you that information.
Right, now that I'm thinking about it, though, is that if you received this money and we didn't already approve it in the budget, then any, any line movements, or if she moved this money in other accounts, that's, that's nothing. So we were. this money in other accounts, that's, that's nothing. So we would have to just adopt this, and this would automatically put it in, because if she put it to other lines, it shouldn't have went to the other lines.
It really was just floating around.
When I print out a report from ENCODE, these line items show up on my report. It shows up as grant revenue, and then at the bottom of my report, it shows up as grant expenses. But when we get the audit, we don't get credit for the revenues, but we get hit with the expenses, because we never accept these revenues.
Right.
So I'm not, from my understanding, they're in these line items. But because we only accept them by resolution and not by ordinance...
But this was above what you already budgeted. All your revenues, this is above.
Correct.
So this is money that we received that was never allocated anywhere, and we're just, we're just receiving it to put it...
We're just accepting it, we're accepting it by ordinance and making that amendment to the budget.
Makes sense. Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do y'all understand what's, what's going on with the budget, play around with the money? And that's why we can't get financials. I mean, like I said before, we, the council and myself, March the first, fourth, we got a financial, went through November of seventeen. We're in March of eighteen, have no idea where we are financially. And this lady, she billed us over two-hundred thousand dollars in seventeen. Something's wrong. Something's really wrong.
Yes, it is. Like I was just want to, this is money that came to us, but we never officially received it by ordinance, and this is just, this is just received by ordinance.
Clear it up, right.
Right.
Got you.
I feel like I have to say something on behalf of Ms. Lulu. And I'm not an accountant. I, I could be wrong, but my understanding is that the reason we don't have up-to-date financials is because the council didn't accept the amendments that were provided to us by Ms. Lulu for twenty-seventeen. So she doesn't want to go through, spend the money to put all of this inform, I'm not going to argue about it, chief, this is...
Were you bringing it up?
Well, I'm just, this is all I'm saying. This is all I know. This is...
So it's the council's fault, is what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying it's the council's fault. I'm, well, I'm just saying that if, if the amendments had been accepted, she could have closed out seventeen and moved on to eighteen. So you can't get eight, I mean, and I'm not even sure if I'm right about this. This is just my understanding.
It's looking at your checkbook. We only get in the financial statement through November.
Because the amendments weren't accepted by the council.
It has nothing to do with the amendments. The money's in there.
Sue, do you really believe that?
I do. I really do.
That's a shame.
Do you believe we should pay her two-hundred thousand dollars a year for this?
I don't, I don't think that we paid her two-hundred thousand.
How much do you think we paid her?
I think it was like a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty.
And how much was she allocated?
Forty-eight.
How much was she paying in two thousand sixteen, over a hundred and forty?
Look, I'm not on, on trial here.
I mean, you're on a council, you approved it.
I'm not on trial here, chief.
I'm not saying you are. But you bring it up that we're not, nothing's done.
All I wanted to do was just put that out there as a possibility.
As a possibility. If that's not the case, how hard is it to put numbers in a, in a computer? We have a software program, ENCODE, that we pay for. You put the expenses in there. One of my problems I'm having is I'm being charged for the city attorney, for the city finance director, and the city auditor. Can I finish?
Chief, you've been through this a number of times. I'm sick of hearing it. I do mind. I am tired of hearing it.
Too bad. Maybe it'll get corrected then.
It's not going to get corrected.
That's right. You're right. It's not going to get corrected.
It's not going to get corrected because of that, because of you going over it and over it and over it.
Well, it doesn't get corrected. How else am I supposed to address it?
Well, this is, this is not going to make it get better.
So it's going to get worse?
I, I have no idea, but I'm sick of hearing it.
I'm sorry about that. I'm tired, I'm tired of not starting getting financial information when y'all pass an ordinance saying that we're supposed to get it. I'm tired of getting dinged for bills for the city auditor, the city finance director, and the city attorney that we don't see. And some of them been for other, for other expenses. Like I said, last year we found out we got billed for a council meeting for Mr. Bures to attend here. Nothing against Mr. Bures. Why should the police department pay seven-hundred dollars for Mr. Bures to be in attendance? So, shake your head all you want. That's what it is.
Okay, do I have a motion to close public hearing?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Since things got a little convoluted, it may sound like what I'm about to say does not address this specific issue, but since the police department has stood up again, I would like to make a recommendation, that we have a second city council meeting once a month, just for the police department, because the rest of the city needs to have their business done. I mean, we just saw in the paper that we have some serious problems with our fire department, but we come here and we devote more than half of our time to the police department issues every single month. And I believe I've heard the chief complain about possibly getting a bill for Mr. Bures and Ms. Lulu's expertise and their professional, I mean, my guess is seventy-five percent of their time is spent on police department issues. You don't think that's true?
No, I don't.
How mu, okay, then what would you say would be the time that we spend on police department issues at every meeting? Please consider having a second meeting, so that the chief can have the whole entire meeting to straighten out the police department issues.
After hearing that, Jason Bruzick, seventy-two oh four Stonely.
Thank you.
I thought I would remind the council of a statute that exists, and it's malfeasance in office, and I want you to listen to this carefully. Malfeasance in office is committed when any public officer or public employee shall intentionally refuse or fail to perform any duty lawfully required of him as such officer or employee. If it's legally required of them, it starts to fall underneath of that statute. And the statute number, if you want it, is Title fourteen, Section one thirty-four, if you want to jot that down. So with all due respect to anybody who watches these meetings, if an elected official just isn't doing what they're supposed to do, they're mandated by law to do, I think it might start to fall underneath of that world of malfeasance. So not getting access to ENCODE despite a law being passed seems to me to fit that definition. But it's up to you folks to figure it out, and go forward however you may choose. But I hear something like what I've just heard, and it shocks me, because if the guy just got his records, he just got the financials, he'd be happy, and we wouldn't have to hear any of this. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Tommy Buddy, seventy-two eight zero, seventy-two zero eight Stonely Drive. I'm sorry, I don't even know where I live. I'm going to address a, a comment Ms. Benton made. And if the council didn't pass an amendment, that means it didn't get passed, you closed the books. You don't keep them open till twenty-twenty-two, waiting for the council to pass.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Then, really, I'm being, seeing, wouldn't the books then not be accurate if you, it didn't put your actual cost?
That, that is a question for the auditors and other people, but if you can't keep books open forever, waiting on an amendment that was not passed. So you just have to close the books, and if they're inaccurate, then that's taken up later by the outside auditors and the legislative auditor.
But then, Mr. Buddy, okay, so say we do it that way, and then they, Ms. Lulu does give the chief his information, but it's all wrong.
No, 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 no. What would be wrong would be ending balances for two thousand seventeen, not two thousand eighteen. You, you know, in accounting, in accounting, you, in accounting, you account for things by, by a period, an accounting period. The city's accounting period is January one to December thirty-one. So, so if there's an amendment that related to two thousand seventeen, it affects, potentially affects whether things were recorded properly in two thousand seventeen, whether they were done by law, in accordance with governmental accounting standards.
I understand that now. I see.
So, so, you know, it's incumbent upon the city's accountant to close the books. And she's a CPA, and she's, she's a third-party contractor. She's not an employee, but she's paid a heck of a lot of money, and she knows she needs to close the books. There's no amendment. It didn't happen. Close the books. She cannot keep the books open. It is malfeasance by the mayor, by her contractors, to keep the books open when the amendment's not forthcoming. What are you going to keep them open, for twelve years, seven years? So what, what it's doing, it sounds like an excuse an accountant would use. Most accountants, professionals, want to close the year-end before they start reporting on the current year, but they do it timely. Exxon closes its books four days after the end of the year. Multi-billion-dollar company. And if there's any adjustments that are made, there's proper procedures to make them for the previous year. But they don't let it slow down the current month and, and periods of counting. And the reason why, as, as it's been said by the chief and by Jason and others, is because you need financial information to operate. It's important. It's critical. I agree, it's, it's malfeasance. It's something, it's terrible not to get current. And when I mean current, you shouldn't have financial data closings past thirty days after the end of the month. That's generous. And I've done this for my lifetime, had twenty-eight companies, different sets of books. They closed within thirty days. So the controller came and told me why he couldn't do his or her job. And so I've been listening to this going on, you know, I, I come to these meetings, most of them, and I see the time we spend on this. And I'm going to tell you, the chief ought to get his numbers, and the fire department ought to see their numbers, and the recreation department, and the council ought to see the numbers. Ms. Benton, it's incumbent upon you to know where the city is financially. You're in the same boat the chief's in. And, and, and how do you do your job? How, how do all the council members do their job when you don't know where the city is financially? It, there's no good reason for this. And if there is a good reason, it's incumbent upon the administration to come up with workarounds. You can't just say, can't close the books. It's, that's not acceptable. It's unprofessional. As citizens, we shouldn't accept it. As council members, you shouldn't accept it. The chief certainly shouldn't accept it. Nobody should accept this. This is, this is unprofessional and completely unacceptable, this situation. And we hear about it month after month after month, and nothing's done. I think it's a complete waste of time and money. We do spend a lot of time and money. Ms. Lulu, when you look at her expenses, has an enormous amount of money for accounting, for changes, different budgets, things of this nature. She's, she's, the city's paying through the nose a lot of money for clerical work, but we can't close the books? Unacceptable. It's, it's unacceptable. And, and I would hope that the mayor, the current mayor, would fix it ASAP. I could fix it in about thirty days, if it were my responsibility. Any professional could fix this situation overnight, almost. And it may mean a change of personnel, but it would get fixed. And, and I'm not trying to be mean, Ms. Lulu's not here. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to say something when she's not here to defend herself, but she is a CPA. She knows what standards are. Now, maybe she's not given the tools by the mayor. I don't know what the cause is. I'm not going to point fingers. It's an unacceptable situation, and I would hope that the administration can, can rectify it quickly. And, and if this goes on again, another month, it's, it's a failure by the administration. I won't point names, I mean, point fingers to names, but it's the administration's job to get timely financial statements.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buddy.
Good evening. Jason Hasbo, five-seven-three Posey Avenue. This is going to wait till the end, but since it was brought up about Ms. Lulu's income, we might as well go ahead and cover it now. So I'll go ahead and point fingers that Mr. Buddy will not. Obviously, there's an issue with the mayor and the, and the CPA. So back in twenty, I'm just going to go through the proposed budget for two thousand eighteen. I don't think there's been a budget actually adopted yet, but just going through the lines, two thousand fifteen, accounting services, thirty-four thousand dollars. Two thousand sixteen, adopted budget, forty-eight. Actuals, ninety-four. Proposed budget in two thousand seventeen, seventy-five. Adopted budget, forty-eight. Actuals as of October, one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So even if, let's just think about this, even if they would have gotten their proposed budget of seventy-five thousand dollars, they would have been over by eighty. Okay, that's two thousand seventeen. Two thousand eighteen, this seems a little foolish to me on Ms. Lulu's part, to be quite honest. Again, I, I'm assuming she has some input in, in the proposed budget. They proposed seventy-five thousand dollars, again, in two thousand eighteen. Counsel, here's my recommendation. Don't pay her bill. She has input on that seventy-five thousand dollars. She ought to keep that within that budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
If we only approved paying him, we don't pay the bill?
We adopted, we admit, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tracy Whittle, Chief Walker's secretary. There's not much that I agree on with you, Ms. Valente, but I also am sad that Chief Walker has to get up here, month after month after month, and preach, and preach, and beg for his figures. But when the amendments came up in October, they were projected amendments, and they were projected figures through the end of the year. But at that time, we had only received financials through July. So how is this council supposed to estimate what we're going to spend and what we need, how money needs to be moved around, and where we need to be at the end of the year? That's very hard. And I work with our budget every single day. I know what we spend. I know where our grants are, and I know about how much we should have left besides the payroll expenses. So, I mean, that's very hard. I mean, it's hard for your household to estimate in October what you're going to spend. You don't, you have unforeseen expenses. You don't know if a car's going to break down. You don't know if you're going to have termite damage. That is, it's impossible, especially to do for an entire city. You're in October, and you only have hard figures through July. So to ask to pass those ordinance, to pass that ordinance on projected figures that you don't have in your hand, if I was a council member, I wouldn't pass it either. So I don't blame you all for not passing that. And we still only have figures through November. We don't have, and we're already in March. So, I mean, I do understand that, and everything is rolled into one. And it is hard to go through that, that budget. It's pages and pages and pages. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion? Are you going to go? I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and I'm just going to chime in here. Earlier this week, I had to respond to a public records request, which dealt with Ms. Lulu's invoices, and so I had occasion to go through them. They were provided to me by Ms. Pipitone. And Nicole, you got, you've got this now logged as two thousand eighteen dash four, is the public records request. But I got the breakdown of her, of Ms. Lulu's invoices, so that, take your pencils down, I can give you the actual numbers. And these are supported by the checks. And if you want to get the copy of the response, Mr. Bruzik's got it. For two thousand sixteen, the submission, the invoices totaled one hundred four thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars. For two thousand seventeen, the invoices totaled seventy-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. That's invoice, let me be very clear. These are invoices submitted in calendar year two thousand seventeen. They total seventy-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-two dollars, fifty cents. And two invoices have been submitted for two thousand eighteen, totaling sixteen thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars, twenty-five cents. For a total of invoices since January first, two thousand sixteen, of two hundred thousand, two oh eight seventy-five.
One twenty-three thirty-three fifty for two thousand sixteen, and one oh nine six twenty-nine seventy-five for two thousand seventeen. Because I added them up, too.
Okay, well, I'm telling you what my computer says, so. So what did you get, Mr. Bruzik?
Hundred twenty-three thirty-three fifty cents.
For what calendar, for what calendar year?
For two thousand sixteen. And one oh nine six twenty-nine seventy-five cents.
And what's your, and what's your grand total?
One hundred and twenty-three hundred and thirty-three thousand, fifty cents for two thousand sixteen, and one oh nine six twenty-nine...
120, 333,050 for 2016, and 109629.75 for 2017. But what's interesting is 2017 isn't done being billed yet. There are still invoices outstanding for 2017, because it only went up through October. So both November, December is missing. And typically, what I noticed from the 2016 to 2017 years is there's a period of about four months that are missing. She doesn't actually bill until late February or March or even April. So I've turned over some copies to the council, so that they can go ahead and review them at their leisure. And grand total of what I added up was $229,963.25.
So your figure's different by mine for $29,000.
Yeah, across both years, which honestly is not. That ain't bad for a part-time gig. I'll tell you what, I'm impressed.
Anyone else? Do you have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson. Second by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor?
Aye.
Five yeas, zero nays. Any more council discussion?
No discussion.
You know, I know sometimes that we all get up here and we make our comments, and of course, a lot of people know that me and Ms. Valente are not always on the same page, or me and Ms. Benton are not always on the same page. But I do know that if they come here and sit up here and go through all of this, there is a passion that they have for this city. And you know, as, so we should all be, we should all listen to what everyone has to say, and don't do it with disdain, or be ugly to one another, because believe it or not, some ideas may be ingenious. And I got to tell you, Ms. Judy Johnson came up with the best one I've ever heard, and that was make Colonial Club a graveyard. I mean, I don't know if it was just me, but I thought it was ingenious. All right, do I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Four ayes, one nay, motion passes.
All righty. Proposed ordinance number 2018-1. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton and seconded by Councilman Johnston. An ordinance relating to asphalt repairs around the city of Harahan to be performed during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018. It's for highways and street maintenance, for $100,000.
Are you ready?
Open a public hearing.
Have a motion open for public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays. Flow's now open. No one wishes to address this ordinance? I'd like to make a motion to close public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnston. Second by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays, public hearing is now closed. Council discussion?
Yeah, sure. My only thing is, I'm waiting for a spreadsheet to come back on the breakdown of this money, how it's being allocated, what's being done with the streets. So I would actually like to see if we can defer it again until next month, until we get the answers from Mr. Calvin with the breakdown like he did back by VFW, where he gave us a breakdown of what's going to be streets, what's going to be curbs, what's going to be, broke it all down to show where all the money is at. We did not receive it with this, so I would like to motion to defer.
Councilman Johnson would like a motion.
Makes sense.
Councilman Benton would like a second, that motion to defer? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Craig and Smith.
I did the second.
Sorry.
Johnson and Benton. That's 5-0.
So five ayes, zero nays, motion to defer. We'll pick it up again next month.
All right. Ordinances for introduction. Proposed ordinance number 2018-3. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Wheeler. An ordinance to amend ordinance number 1841, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018, for the police department of the city of Harahan. All right, old business.
Before we move on to old business, I'd actually like to see if we can, I'd like to motion to pull this resolution back up, 2018-2 with the cooperative endeavor agreement with Jefferson Parish.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson would like to make a motion to pull back.
In a governmental agreement, not cooperative, I'm sorry.
To pull up the intergovernmental agreement? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, five ayes, zero nays.
Councilman Johnson's here, can you, you mind coming up so we can ask you some questions?
He's hiding back there, trying to get off the heights.
That might be legal.
The two questions that arose, one question was, is that in the agreement, it was labeled for 70,000, and it was thought to be, that was supposed to be 75?
It's 70,000.
Okay. And the second question was, is this supposed to go to the HAA, or y'all paying for it directly, or is it coming, being a funnel through the city?
Reimbursement. It's a reimbursement setup. You guys pay the bill, and you give us the bill, and we reimburse y'all. It's a reimbursement. We don't give you, we don't give you the cash.
You don't give anything to the recreation department.
So you're not actually giving the city money? I'm sorry. You're not actually giving the city money, the city's giving you the bill, and you're paying the bill.
Well, the way we do it normally is that we do a reimbursement. The city pays the bill, they send us the invoice, and we reimburse, as we do the same way with Todd. Todd buys what he needs, sends us the bill, we reimburse the city.
So the city pays originally, and then you pay back the city?
We don't give the money to the city.
So we're accepting the money, but not receiving the money?
There's two ways that this can be done.
What's the way it's set up?
Brian.
Brian St. here, there's two ways that it can be done. If it can go directly to any 501(c)(3) organization that's working in the city, or it can go as a reimbursement after the expenditures have been made on behalf of the recreation department. And so it can be set up either way. If we have a nonprofit that it can go to, but it's still set up on a reimbursement basis.
The original setup was for me to, as Brian says, is to give the money to the parents' club. Athletic Association. They're a 501(c).
Right.
It sounds like it wasn't a good idea, because I think I was getting some restriction, some kind of fight back. So I figured to make sure that we involved the city administration in it. So that's why we changed it to get us to pay the city.
Right.
Originally, I was going to pay, give it a 501(c), which is the athletic association. They would pay the bills, give me the bills, and we'd reimburse.
Okay.
But we changed it because I didn't want to fight back from the city.
Right. And this money, we pay it, y'all pay us back, so it's going to go here, and that's it?
Up to 70,000 dollars. If they spend 50, they get 50. They spend 60, they get 60, up to 70,000. I was told that what they needed to do was redo the whole field, new fences, new park, I knew everything. New field, new benches. So they told me the price was around 70,000, so I moved 70,000. If it goes over 70,000, I have to do another IGA in a governmental agreement to get y'all more money. But right now, it's at 70,000.
Okay. Well, we appreciate it.
And you do not have to actually spend the money. You can send the invoice, as soon as it's invoiced.
Okay.
You can send the invoice directly. You don't have to write a check from the city.
Oh, that's good.
Okay.
When we talk about reimbursement, it's also, as you get that invoice, we can.
Just send it over.
We can send it.
Okay.
Send it to the city or send it to the vendor?
So does anything need to change?
Send it to office.
No, but send the payment to the city or to the vendor?
We can do it however you want.
Okay, we can do it to vendor, that's a good, if we can do it that way, I'd really do it to vendor.
Okay.
Not even involve the city.
Right.
City's sending the bills, we pay the vendor direct. I didn't know we could do that.
Okay.
That's why we got legal here, that's my legal. He's the lawyer, not me.
Did confirm the amount at 70.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, counsel.
I got one question for you, Councilman Johnson, while you're off topic. And this is completely off topic. Who is in, what's going on on Earhart with those lights, and who's doing that?
We doing that. The parish is doing that.
So glad.
Right, and they should be turned on by the end of the month. Now, we did.
And that is awesome, because it is so dark and dangerous there.
We also did the lights from New Orleans to Clearview. But you have 26 lights out because people stole the wiring.
Oh, wow.
So we're working on getting them fixed. But that's what happened, they stole a copper wiring, and they steal anything. They dug in the ground and stole the wiring.
Oh, my goodness.
So that's why they had 26 lights that were out from New Orleans to Clearview. But they're supposed to be fixing that, and we're also doing all the lights all the way to David Drive. So it's going to be nice when you get lit up. It's supposed to be lit up at the end of the month, right, Brian? Didn't they say, by the end of the month?
Yes.
Yeah. So we did that, the parish did that.
People don't realize how much this man has done for us in this city, and also Brian St. here. I mean, this guy is a wealth of information, he is unbelievable. I guarantee if you've got a question, he's got an answer. And if he don't, I'm positive Mr. Carlo does. And we just always thank you so much, and it's amazing. I mean, we were, I saw it the other day, Chief St. here and I talked about it, and I know that's a little dark stretch, and I didn't, I didn't read, and Chief says, you know, I think Councilman Johnson's doing it. So I just wanted to recognize it and say thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So in order for us, Mr. Gilbert, to go the other way, where they just pay it straight, we give them the bill, and they pay it straight, do we have to revise this in any way, or are we just good to go?
Yeah, because if you read Section 1, it says that the city of Harahan agrees to provide funding to the recreation department. It kind of makes it sound like that the city receives it maybe in general, and then allocates it to the recreation department, and then from there, the bills get paid out. No, on the resolution itself. Section 1 of the resolution. And it seems like, I guess what Councilman Johnston was saying is that the city, or the HAA, hires the vendor, gets the PO, and then sends the bill directly to the parish, and the parish will pay it. So it's not as if the money ever comes into the city.
Just trying to make this as streamlined as possible.
I don't think it's a section 1 for Benton.
Oh, you want to make a change?
Oh, neither. What it says is that the intergovernmental agreement, you're just author, you're approving the intergovernmental agreement to provide funding for upgrades, but it doesn't say how the funding. That's what I'm looking at. That's the parish.
Yeah, that's the parish. Section 1.
That says agrees to provide funding to the recreation department.
The city makes it look like the city needs to receive it in the general and reallocate it to the recreation, and I don't think it should say that.
How about the city of Harahan agrees to incur not greater than $70,000 for upgrades for improvements to Wilcox Field and Harahan Playground, set expenditures to be reimbursed by the parish of Jefferson. So you're limiting yourself as to how much you're going to, you're going to incur not more than $70,000 worth of expenses for this purpose, which will be reimbursed by the parish of Jefferson.
But what we're talking about is, it's not going to be an expense to us. We're going to get the bill, and we're giving it straight to Jefferson Parish, and they're going to pay for it.
That's what I'm saying. The language would be that you'll incur the expense, doesn't say you're going to pay the bill. You're going to go out and you're going to, you're going to hire the contractor to do the work.
Should we take like a few-minute recess?
Sure.
Yeah, we don't, yeah.
Make sure we get the work correctly.
I have a motion for a five-minute, five-minute recess.
Councilman Johnson, motion for a five-minute recess. Councilman Wheeler, all in favor?
Aye.
Five-minute recess? I'd like to call the meeting back to order.
And they'll add to it?
Paging Carrie Wheeler.
Take this down.
It really wasn't me.
Okay, so we're going to go over these edits?
Uh, yes.
If you'll give me one moment.
So we're going to make a motion?
I am going to make a motion to.
To amend.
Amend. And one second.
Just give me a second for the computer.
Nothing like being put under the pressure, Gil.
We have to do just some appointments, would that, we can do that while you're finishing up? Would that be okay, or are you ready?
I'm ready.
He's ready.
Oh, he's ready?
He's ready.
He's ready, okay. Just wanted to give him.
Okay, with respect to proposed resolution number 2018-2.
Motion to amend, yes.
There is a motion to amend. The motion to amend is as follows. Strike section 1, and insert and lose thereof the following. Section 1, pursuant to the intergovernmental agreement between the parish of Jefferson and the city of Harahan, the city of Harahan shall contract for the work described in the intergovernmental agreement and submit invoices for same to the parish of Jefferson for reimbursement, period. The mayor of the city of Harahan is encouraged to utilize the expertise of the Harahan Athletic Association in selecting the contractors to perform the work described in the intergovernmental agreement, period.
Yep, sounds good.
All in favor to accept the resolution pursuant to the.
Amendment first.
To the amendment? Are we going to do amendment first?
Yeah.
So we're going to make a motion to accept amendment to resolution 2018-2? All in favor?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays. And now we'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2018-2?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnston.
Second.
Second by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays. Motion passes. And Madam Clerk, back to old business?
Old business number 1, civil service board appointment.
Okay, do I have a motion to appoint, appointments for the civil service board?
Yeah, I actually spoke to Mr., I don't know if it's Gerard or Gerard, because I just called him Mr. Brady today, and I would like to nominate him for the civil service appointment, please.
All in.
Mr. Brady, what's his name, I'm sorry?
Gerard. I don't know if it's Gerard or Jared.
Gerard.
No, Mr. Brady.
Spell it for us.
G-R-A-D.
G-R-A-R-D.
Brady.
Initial J, last name Brady.
Perfect.
I just said Mr. Brady.
All right, all in favor to accept Mr. Gerard? I'm sorry?
Second.
Craig.
Need a second, Craig will second? Okay, all in favor to accept Mr. Gerard J. Brady to the civil service board?
Aye.
Aye.
All five ayes, zero nays, welcome to the civil service board.
Mr. Brady.
Okay.
Old business number 2, appointments to the fire department advisory board.
Okay. I'd like to make an appointment to the advisory board. I'd like to nominate Ms. Rena Sanders. Motion to nominate Ms. Rena Sanders to the advisory board.
Do we have to motion each one? Because the resolution said that they all get to pick one, so we all get to pick one. They don't have to motion, huh? Yeah, just name it.
Okay, I'm going to choose.
Benton, who's, who's Councilman Benton?
I'm going to nominate Mr. Robert Johnson.
No, we don't have to have a motion.
The way the resolution was written, each council member gets to choose.
So Bodie's Rena Sanders, Benton's Robert Johnson, Hewitt?
I would like to nominate Councilwoman Wheeler.
All right. Johnston, Councilman Johnston?
I would actually like to pull a Bodie from last time, and I'd nominate myself.
All right. Johnston, Johnston. He's going to do a Bodie. Councilman Wheeler, who would you like to?
I would like to nominate Attorney Darren O'Connor.
Darren O'Connor.
It is D-A-R-R-I-N, I believe, O'Connor.
I am absolutely going to use that.
Now, new business, we own a new business. Ms. Judy Roman, on behalf of St. Rita of the parish, would like to request barricades and a police escort for the annual May crowning procession on Sunday, May 6th, 2018, after 11:30 a.m. Mass, and also for the Feast of Corpus Christi procession on Sunday, June 3rd, after 11:30 a.m. Mass.
Okay, do I have a motion to grant permission?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnston, second by Councilman Wheeler, all in favor?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays, motion passes.
All right, number 2 on new business, Romelli Contract Trash Pickup Issues, Community Recycling, etc.
All right, Councilman Wheeler?
Do we want to talk about this right now, or we want to wait?
Yeah, I'm going to have to make a motion to defer.
All right, so we'll make a, Councilman Wheeler would like to make a motion to defer.
Second.
Councilman Johnson was second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays, we'll defer it, we'll pick it up in general in April.
Address the council.
All right, would anyone like to address the council? Please state your name and address when you come to the podium.
Eric Chatelain, 700 Colonial Club Drive. I'd like to just remind everybody, on May 19th, we're going to have the St. Rita Dad's Club Crawfish Cook-Off. So whoever could put that down on their calendar, we're still in the works, we'll have a lot more details next meeting. But I just wanted to put it out there right now, but it's May 19th. And also, we have, uh, for the people here, Fish Fry Friday night. All right, thank you.
So I'd like to let you know, Ms. Chatelain, that I'm gonna do a Bodie. And I guarantee you, I'm gonna have a team in there this year. We're coming to win, baby.
You gonna trademark that?
I'm gonna trademark that, that's mine.
Yeah, I'm like, what is the Bodie? We don't know yet.
And I wanna point out that it is now a little after nine. This is probably the shortest meeting we've had, I think, since I've been coming, so congratulations. Well done. And it was nice to see the civility and just how it all went. That was so much better than I've ever seen it in eighteen months. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well done.
Thank you. Is that it? So now I'd like to close, address the council, Secretary's report?
Secretary's report for February twenty eighteen, total revenue, five hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Reports.
Chief Walker?
The stats for the Harahan Police Department for February two thousand eighteen. We had six hundred twelve calls for service, ten auto accidents handled, fifty-three citations issued for eighty-eight different charges, one funeral escort, ten patrol requests. We had fifteen narcotics arrests for twenty different charges, sixteen were felony, four for misdemeanor. Other arrests were fifty-one, other charges were a hundred and sixteen. Had eleven felonies, seventy-one misdemeanors, eleven city and twenty-three traffic. But no murders, no rapes, no robberies, no residential burglaries, no non-residential burglaries, no attempted burglary, no motor vehicle thefts, no attempted motor vehicle thefts. We had seven larceny thefts and eleven assaults. So it was a pretty good month. Also wish everybody a happy Easter and safe Easter. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good job, Chief.
Chief St. Seer?
I'd just like to announce that the Harahan Fire Fighters Association is gonna have another fish fry on the twenty-third, which is not just a Friday, but the next twenty-third of this month. We're gonna do a lunch in, uh, Jenna. Um, lunch is gonna be twelve to eleven to one. And then it will be five till we run.
Can you mind stand over there and? He didn't hear you on the microphone.
It's because it wasn't on.
Oh, there you go, wasn't on.
Sorry, I was trying to be lazy. Like to announce that the Harahan Fire Fighters Association is gonna have another fish fry on March twenty-third. Fish fry will be lunch from eleven to one and then dinner at five until we run out of food. Please come and see us. We have some pretty good fish. And we're gonna make a few improvements. Our corn was a little hard last time. We recognized the problem, we're gonna get that straight. It's gonna be eight dollars per plate. Thank you very much, come see us.
Thank you.
Councilman Benton? I'm sorry?
Yes. Uh, I've, I've made that, we've talked about that, but I'll be happy to talk about it again. Yeah, we've- No, it's, that happened several months ago. We, we, we have had a fire rating change and, uh, unfortunately, our rating has gone to a class three. Uh, we've worked very hard to try to keep it at a class two, but unfortunately, our manpower issues that we've been discussing for several years greatly affected us or adversely affected us in, in that situation. And, uh, so that's what, we put this committee back, you know, put another committee together to take a look at how we operate and how we do things and how we function. And hopefully, we're gonna work very hard to get back to our class two.
How often do you value it?
Every five years. Or-
You're a three for five years?
Not necessarily. We're a three until the next rating. They come back automatically in five years. They can come back anytime that there is a change that would significantly affect the rating. So if we do make improvements next year and it's enough manpower or enough, you know, purchase of new equipment, whatever would affect the actual rating change, I can call them back and say, hey, come re-rate us. They'll re-rate us on that and then give us our new classification.
Chief, I have one question for you.
Yes.
So when you, and, and just, I just need some help on understanding this.
Sure.
So when you go from a class two to a class three?
Correct.
Us as homeowners, our insurance premium goes up, is that correct?
You will get an insurance in, increase, yes.
So my point being is that we would rather take that money and support our own community?
Absolutely.
Than support these big insurance companies?
It's better to pay us and get something for it than an insurance company that you get nothing for unless of course your house burns.
Yeah, and I want people to understand that because that's important. That's important because we're paying it to somebody who's, where we, we're actually taxing one to us and we're not benefiting ourselves. So when you come up here and you, you ask for your milliliter, you say, I need more, I need more firemen, we need more equipment updating. That's not you just saying, hey, just for fun, believe it or not, he's actually protecting you as a homeowner in your insurance alone as well as protecting you by having up-to-date equipment and the men to come put your fire out. You know, God forbid if you're trapped inside or your family's trapped inside of that.
My manpower requests are not based on the wishes of myself that I sit home and dream up a number and say, hey, I'd love to have this many people working for us at the fire department. It's based on a standard. And that standard is NFPA. NFPA sets a standard of how many firemen that you need or should have on scene or will have on scene in order to effectively make an entry into a house if it's on fire. And we're grossly under that number and we've been grossly under that number. We still do what we have to do. I couldn't hold these guys back with a cattle pride if I wanted to. They're gonna come out, they're gonna get off those trucks and the few guys that we have, they're gonna go and they're gonna try to fight those fires. And if I try to keep them out of the buildings, I'm gonna have to fight them right there on the scene. I'm not gonna do that. I'm getting older now and I don't like to fight as much as I used to. However, um, you know, it's based on a standard. You know, we have three guys on duty at any given time. You know, we like to keep our shifts at four, that's what we had before. You gotta realize, we used to have a volunteer fire company that supplemented our manpower. With the changes that have been made and the things that are required of a volunteer fire company, all of the volunteer fire companies around the parish, around the state, around the country have dwindled in their numbers. It got to the point where it's almost impossible to keep a, it was impossible to keep a volunteer fire company going here. One with the number of members, the number of, amount of funding and the amount of training requirements that were put on those members. They would have to train as a volunteer, the same that my professional guys that, or my paid guys in the station have to train. And nobody really has the time to do that. There are a few people, but, um, not many people have the time to do that. So as the volunteer fire company went away, so did our manpower rates or numbers for our rating. So we have four guys on duty, they respond, and that's what you get credit for. Well, NFPA says that those four guys should be accompanied by another nine or eight. And we just don't, don't have it. I mean, sometimes our off-duty personnel comes and responds to fires, but it's not all the time. And of course, you know, um, you know, we've talked about our kind of issue. You know, we've had morale issues, we've discussed that and I've asked for help with that. I need you to help me keep morale up back there. And we've gotta do that by at least, you know, I mean, there's salary concerns, there's, you know, people are trying to live and-
So Chief, when we do, when we pay our, our homeowners taxes at the end of the year, five mils, we have voted as residents to give you five mils of that tax dollars.
Correct.
And my point being is simply this, is that I look into the future of Harahan and as I, I, I push hard to promote commercial, that creates a more, uh, thriving tax base that these firemen will get five more mils of. And, and sometimes I think, you know, my push for commercial may be, may seem a little aggressive. And, and I'm sorry that it, it seems that, but I understand at the end of the day, that five mils as well as whatever the city takes in to give you city services becomes so paramount.
Absolutely. You know, the only place to get revenue other than commercial, uh, supporting commercial development within, within Harahan, and where do you really do that, we're limited, um, is to go to the homeowners. And that's tough. People pay enough taxes to the state, the federal government and everyone else, and we pay the penalty for that. And they don't wanna pay it locally. But what I can tell you is what concerns me is, is what I've watched in the City of Harahan and it's not, it's not for me not telling people in the past, but I've watched the City of Harahan's budget grow, but not the fire departments. You know, I've, I had a seven hundred thousand dollar budget when the city had two and a half million dollar budget. I now have a nine hundred and thirty, a forty-six thousand dollar budget and the city has a six million dollar budget. If we, if we'd have grown with the city or as the city grown, we would have been considering that. I don't know, you know, maybe the money was needed for other things. But if we'd have grown with them, we'd be in a much better position right now. And I think that's what we have to do. We have to come up to that, you know, where the city has grown, grow with them. And we need to continue to grow with the city. When new revenue comes in, you know, we were always told, wow, man, if we annex and we get this new tax revenue, we're gonna hire new firemen. We annexed and I haven't seen any new firemen. I know the revenues come in, you know, but we haven't seen anything. But the responsibility of covering new property. You know, and it concerns me, you know, that's always been my concern about the development of Colonial Country Club is, is we're gonna take on more responsibility with the same or maybe even less because we've lost people and we haven't replaced them. And that's been going on for years.
You know, I got to meet with, uh, um, County Mayor Benzon about two, three months ago. And I asked, because I'll ask anybody, I don't care who y'all, I'm gonna ask anything. Most of the time, people look at me like I'm crazy, but sometimes they'll answer. And you know what Ben says? He says, you know what, I wake up in the morning, I promote commercial. We go to lunch and guess what I'm doing? I'm promoting commercial. And even before I go to bed, I'm looking for new ways to promote commercial. Um, this Sunday, I gotta spend some time with the Plackamins Parish President, Amos Cormier. And I said, how do y'all do it in Plackamins? And I'm telling you, before I can even get the words out, he says, we promote commercial. And that is in a way so we can make our city more robust without putting so many taxes on the citizens. I mean, I know that you'll see in the next few months or the next few years that our drainage and sewage and sewer plant, they're in terrible shape. And I'm telling you, if we don't do something, we will have to do something, change will occur, no matter what. And that will be taxing you, a promoting commercial. And that is our only two avenues. And so as I get up here and I, and I, I beat on the drum of promoting commercial, I just want people to be a little bit more understanding of that. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Benton, reports.
Um, I just wanna say about this issue, um, I agree with Tim Bodie. We do need to be more unified and, um, the chief said at the last meeting that I shouldn't have questioned his purchases of guns, machine guns and drones and cars because they were within guidelines. And that was not the point. The point is that we're a city of very limited resources. And the council and, and Mr. Paul Johnson have graciously provided the chief with a lot of funds. And I would, I just would have wished that the chief, and I've spoken to him about this in the past, that he would have been more of a team player and possibly worked with Chief St. Seer and the mayor and maybe dispersed those funds to things that might have been more critically important, such as our forty-five-year-old hoses that the police department uses. And the fact that the policemen, I mean, the firemen have to buy safety equipment out of their own pockets. And I just think that's, we, as a city, we just can't have that. And that, that's why I made those comments, that I just wish we could work together and use our resources in the best way possible. That's all.
Councilman Benton, not only they are buying stuff that they need out of their own pockets, they're actually buying toilet paper, paper towels, I mean, out of their own pocket.
And it's gotta be addressed.
We gotta, it's something that we gotta fix. Absolutely.
And we did make a big purchase of those items after the first of the year, once we got a new budget in place. But, you know, that's gonna go back.
Yeah.
And so either we address, oh yeah. Yeah, so either we address when, when we get close to running out of money and put more money in or we will be in the same position at some point, if you-
Councilman Johnson?
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to speak just a little bit about something that's been happening a lot recently with the repairs on the streets that's going on with the sewer and they're tearing it up and they're doing a, a bad job of fixing, of asphalt in the, the ground. Uh, I've reached out to Mr. Calvin, which is the engineer, and he replied back to me with this. He said that they have notified the contractor to take corrective actions on several asphalt repairs to date. No final payments will be made until all restoration, asphalt, concrete, sodding and fencing is complete. So I just wanna tell that to all the citizens that with the shoddy work that's being done, it's gonna be fixed before they get paid. That's all.
Um, I didn't really have a report, but I, I guess I just have to make a few comments on the last few statements that were made. You know, I don't think we should say, let's take money from the police department to help fund the fire department. Because we all agree that we want both of our public safety departments of our city funded appropriately, right? So when we discuss, and it's a shame that we're harping on accounting, but that's the one that comes to mind because it's so grossly overspent, that if it's budgeted at forty-eight and we're paying a hundred and forty, that's where that money should be allocated back to fire or to police, not take from police to help fire, right? So these services that we know we need, but we're, this, the city hall's not burning down if we don't pay the accountant two hundred percent more than they're supposed to be paid, correct? Right. So we don't take from fire, I mean, we don't take from police to give it to fire. We need to find the funds in these line items that the mayor keeps and continually overspending and doesn't show us until they're way overspent and we can't do anything about it. That's where the money needs to be allocated for our public safety departments.
But I would like to officially go on the record and say that the chief would like to sell a machine gun to and buy us a fire hose.
You'll take it? Yeah. Yeah, we need to do a better job of allocating funds, but if we, if we see the money and see where it's going, we might be able to do that.
But to go along with that is that we have capital money that we can buy hoses and stuff that we have capital money we can spend on.
And I'm sure we can buy toilet paper.
Right, we can buy, right. Whereas we can't buy, pay for salaries out of it, we can purchase the fire department, things that they need with that capital. Yeah.
Councilman Wheeler?
Um, so real quick, I would like to send out a huge thank you to Johnny and Evelyn Reams for helping out at the fire, Fish Fry last time. Um, we were just a well-oiled machine, the three of us. We were just, it was like a little chain line, so, um-
She is.
So, uh, I, I want y'all back next Friday. Uh, yes, please come out and support the Fish Fry. It's a, it was a, we had a great time. It was like they sold, I think it was nine hundred plates. You get boiled potatoes, a brownie and a piece of corn and two massive pieces of fish. So, uh, please come out next Friday and just wish everybody a happy Easter.
Pay the bills.
I just want to say, just really, real quick, um, happy Easter first of all. But, but I wanna repeat the saying that I heard today because it just resonated into me so, so much. And, and as we go forth and if I become the future leader of Harahan, this will be my platform and it's very simple and you see it on my signs there, it says, Harahan United. And it says, where there is unity, there is strength. And when we pull this community together, I guarantee you, the sun will shine and we will be bar none. We will make New Orleans look like what we used to. So we'll change places with them, we'll bring that commercial here, we'll bring the money here, we'll have something great here. And it just, again, unite, you got, we gotta be united in our front. We gotta be a united community, we gotta work together. And, uh, and as we move forward in the future, that's my plan. My plan is to get out and work as hard as I can with every single one, whether you like, love me or hate me. You know what, you still call me, I'm gonna be there to help you. So again, happy Easter, everybody. Thank you very much.
Pay the bills.
Pay the bills?
Bills paid in February, uh, three hundred sixty-three thousand, sixty-eight dollars and two cents. No executive session.
Would you like to make discussion about pay the bills?
I'm gonna discuss that, I'm sorry.
Okay, you got it.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned. Uh, uh, motion adjourned by Councilman Johnson?
Wheeler, second.
Second by Councilman Wheeler.
Thirty-five.